I'd like to call this meeting in the Southbury Planning Commission order. Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, Room 205, 7:00 PM. Would everyone join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Nothing on the schedule for a public hearing, unfinished business. Down to new business. I'll make a motion to add a lot line revision for 107 Old Woodbury Road and move it up on the agenda to number one and then move the 744 just below it to number two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor to just add this to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, we'll move up. Lot line revision, 107 Old Woodbury Road, map block 45-5-85, lot number four between 107 Old Berry Road, MBL 45-5-85, lot number four, and 119 Old Woodbury Road, MBL 45-5-84, lot number five. The applicants are here. We can just, yeah, jump up to the microphone over there and just kind of tell us who you are and kind of give us a 30,000-foot overview of kind of what you're trying to accomplish and we'll go from there.
Good evening, I'm Fran Donaruma. I'm a lawyer representing Barry Payden. Barry's present here with me. Barry's the applicant and the homeowner at 107 Old Woodbury Road. And he will be joined shortly by the other involved property owner, Mrs. DeSault. Mr. and Mrs. DeSault, support the application. Is it okay?
I'm going to sit down.
I usually have the opposite problem of not hearing and that was getting right to me. So, Mrs. DeSault will probably come in and her husband's not well enough to join us. So, it's an application that would involve, if you saw fit, to make a lot line revision. But the manner of it is not going to change anything. There's a couple of properties involved, but there won't be any change of how these owners use their property. Mr. Payden has an easement unrelated to the lot line application and he comes and goes that way. And the DeSaults are permitted to use an easement already and they've always been using that and those would stay exactly the same. So, the application is for what was the fee simple driveway from Mr. and Mrs. DeSault's property to be conveyed over to Mr. Payden. Their neighbors and he's doing it for two reasons. One is it's never been used as the actual driveway for the DeSault family. And when Mr. Payden bought three or four years ago, he observed it was just a wooded area and only after he started cleaning up did he realize or learned that the DeSaults actually owned that. But it's never been used for the purpose originally intended. Not involved as an applicant or a party to this is an interior lot owned by the Evanses, lot number seven. May I ask the chair, I should have asked earlier, I do have, you know, in my submission I had some copies, but I have bigger readable ones as well as if it would benefit the commission, there's three generations of map. I don't know, frankly, I've never been before you and forgetting about technology, I can't hang things up even. So, there's three, they're all three different ones actually. It shows three different.
Do you want me to get it easy? Do you like it easy?
Exactly, yes. Would it benefit if I passed around?
Yeah.
I have one for everybody in the chronological order. Oh, thanks. Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, the first, as intended, is exactly the way the lots are right now. And you'll see that Mr. Payden, the applicant's right down on Old Woodbury Road with a house and a swimming pool. And you see that's the drive, the fee simple ownership from the DeSault property extending right down to the street. So, the first version shows exactly as it is now. The second version shows that I'll call the driveway, the DeSault's driveway, being conveyed over to Mr. Payden, you know, in process. And then the third version is what would be the final result. So, with the staples together, the third version, you would see what was once the driveway from the DeSaults down would have become part of the Payden property. Ever since the beginning, looking at any one of those parcels, excuse me, maps, the DeSault property, which is lot four, and on the third of those pages, it would be the revised lot four, you'll see that the house and the driveway all go down onto an easement that the DeSaults are permitted to use coming from the very rear property owner, Evans. So, as I noted at the beginning, nobody will change their use of the streets or the roadways or the easement. And that's really what we hope to accomplish with the lot line revision. I put into my submission by way of disclosure and transparency that there's an agreement between the DeSaults and Mr. Payden where Mr. Payden will pay them $20,000 for that if a lot line revision is permitted. If it is permitted, I would go through the normal process of having a Mylar brought to your land use administrator, have that signed, and we would do quick claim deeds that would create a decent record of what happened. So, that's an overview and I'm happy to answer any questions or in recognizing that Mrs. DeSault is here as well, she or Mr. Payden, from my perspective, are welcome to say anything that's helpful to you.
Does anybody have any questions for that?
They probably have to set back the pool, too, right?
Well, you know, I did corner Mr. Payden and ask about that.
That's my concern.
Okay, sure.
Right up against the.
Yeah, thank you.
And the pool was there when he bought the property and then he sort of discovered that that wooded area wasn't his.
Okay.
So, thank you for that comment though, that's helpful.
There, anything?
I live on Old Woodbury Road. I don't know if this is a conflict, though. I'm your neighbor.
No one ask any questions?
I get it.
Yeah, I am, I'll make a motion to approve the lot line.
Second?
Yeah. Actually, you have to jump up to the microphone for us. Nope, I'm, yep, it's okay. Say your name, sorry. Just for the record, sorry.
I'm sorry I didn't get here on time. I'm caregiver to my husband and Barry was nice enough to let me know when to get here. When I go to sell the property, because the easement is no longer to the roads, so that does put an issue or in the past it supposedly hasn't and some people have brought it up, I am guaranteed when I sell the property that I have full rights to that driveway, right?
So, you have an easement access. I would advise you consult with your attorney regarding the longevity of that access rights.
Because I won't have.
Frontage, correct.
Yes. So, how's that going to affect? Will I be at some time in the future held to the fact I'm landlocked?
We can talk to your attorney, he's right here, but that would be depending on the language of.
No, that's not my attorney.
Oh, I apologize. My apologies.
No.
So, depending on the language of your easement, which wouldn't be necessary to consult with an attorney to essentially codify that your easement is locked in in perpetuity, that would be something that you would have to take care of yourself.
Was that addressed with?
May I?
Yes, absolutely.
And for the record, I'll note that I'm Representative Barry Payden and that Mrs. DeSault has been consulting with Attorney James Smith of the Quinn Law Firm. And I've provided documents within the submission that I did make, the deed by which the Evans, they're the way interior parcel, so it's in the package, their deed when Evans bought the property from Malone Builders in 1988, Volume 225, at page 823, part of the legal description says, "Subject to a permanent, perpetual, and unrestricted right to pass and repass over lot number seven as shown on the map," and that extends to Mrs. DeSault's parcel. So, I think Commissioner, you were.
I'm not an attorney, so answering that question is tough for me, but given the representation from this attorney, I would support that assertion because that is the strict language within your deed. I just can't personally give you advice as far as that goes, unfortunately.
No, I mean, it was changed the day after when he discovered the driveway wasn't what it was supposed to be. It was supposed to be in that easement, but Dan Wong had changed the direction of the house. So, to even use the easement because it would be from the road down around to even get to the front of the house to go in. So, it was changed and brought to the city at that point. I just don't want it ever brought up again because it does have potential there. I did talk to Dr. Smith, Attorney Smith, and at that point, he wasn't even sure why it was even brought up because it's already written. But here we are again.
It was your question, so we're just. Trying to help you through that as far as that goes, but everything you've stated is factual.
Yeah, and actually, the three houses next to us are on the same property, on the same property.
Yeah, we could speak to that a little bit. Ron, you have.
We have sort of motion on table, though.
Let's go back to your pool. It's coming in, it's right there. Right on the line. You okay with that?
Well, it wouldn't be. It won't be. It's been moved. Look at the third page, it's already up to the far right.
Oh, okay. Could I get this?
Before.
I thought this was the third page, sorry. This is the third page. Okay.
So, you're good there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Have this go through.
All right, so we have motion on table. Who seconded it? Okay, so, no further discussion, I'll read the resolution in. Resolution for lot line revision, 107 Old Woodbury Road, lot five, and.
Old Berry Road, lot number four, MBL 45-5-85, and MBL 45-5-84, October 21st, 2025. Whereas at the meeting on October 21st, 2025, Southbury 23rd should receive requests from Francis and Donaruma, attorney representing Barry Payden, owner of 107 Old Woodbury Road, and Jean Guy, trustee of Laura and Laurel, does let trustee of 119 Old Berry Road for approval of a lot line revision between lot A4, an existing single-family home in interior lot, street frontage on lot five, A5, an existing single-family home in standard R60 street frontage. Revision is shown on maps inside the lot revision map prepared for 107 and 119 Old Woodbury Road dated 10/23/2024, prepared by Royal Darden Land Surveying. Whereas pursuant to administrative policy number one, paragraph B-6 of the subdivision regulations, a lot line revision is, in an approved subdivision, subject to the approval of planning commission. Whereas these lots were approved as part of the county Meadows, hang on, these glasses are new, sorry guys, there we go, subdivision 193 by the planning commission. Whereas the survey shows lot A5 obtaining an existing 30-foot strip of lot area, area of 9,150 square feet or .210 acres. The 30-foot strip of land was originally intended during the subdivision approval to provide road frontage to access to lot A4. Whereas the applicant's attorney holds the position that although this strip was intended for access to lot A4, the access was never intended, oh, sorry, was never needed due to there being established easement for access for lot A4 over lot A7. However, that would cause there to be more than one, more than two properties served by the same common driveway. The applicant's attorney has stated that lot A6 is not required to utilize easement over lot A7 since it has standard frontage, road frontage, and could be established their own driveway access at any time. Therefore, there are still two only, there are two lots that are utilizing the access easement for sole access even if the 30-foot strip of land became part of lot A5. Whereas both lots continue to satisfy the zoning regulations for this R60 zone with regard to lot area, minimum dimension of square, road frontage, size, and shape. Whereas Houston Lake Valley Health District on 7/2, 2025, found the proposal to be in compliance with applicable regulations and code. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the request for a lot line revision between lots A4 and lot A5 is subject to the following administrative requirements. One, presentation of one Mylar and three copies of the final map shall be submitted for the signature of the chairman of the planning commission prior to filing on land records. Two, the conveyance document shall be filed with the map. And three, electronic version of the approved map shall be provided to the land use department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All set.
Thank you to the chair for the administrative office and accommodating us and thank you for moving us to the first spot for Mrs. DeSault.
You're welcome.
Shall I recover the large?
We have ours, you can take whatever's you can. It's all good. If you can hear Mike, I'll fix it. Okay.
We all grab that, but the more we all do it, the more breaks.
All right, under new business, site plan modification, PDU number 16774 Main Street South, minor changes to window and doors. How are you guys? You want to jump up here and give us an idea? Yes, yep. Give us an, state your name obviously, give us an idea of, you know, what you're trying to accomplish and we'll go from there.
Okay. My name is Estisa Loomis and I own the 774 Main Street South. And all I'm doing is a couple architectural changes. In the back, in the back of the building, there's supposed to be two double doors and I'm changing them to the same exact doors, just one, since there's no, really after I looked at it, there's no need for two, not in the front, just the back. And there's, I'm adding a window, a small window on the roof where the attic is, and I'm removing one that was placed on where a closet is going to be in the apartment upstairs. That's it. Removing and moving it downstairs to another location, which you can see on the, so it's really just architectural changes.
These are the double doors originally, changing to single doors. Double doors in the rear changing to single and then I can.
Do they want to see? Oh, you guys have.
Perfect. Then we have, Richard is looking at the representation of the window that was accidentally associated with a closet and the intention to remove that window and place it on the main floor. So, that window to be removed, replaced down on the main floor.
What's the use of the attic?
I said a closet. This one that we're going to talk about right here.
Yeah, that's next would be the attic.
Is the attic window, which this attic area, it's only a two-floor structure, retail on the main floor, residential on the top floor. This attic is unusable, it's really just going to be utilities. So, the nature of the window is primarily aesthetic.
What was the use? It's utilities, okay.
Yeah, for aesthetics, yep. Good. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Who's the builder?
Who's the builder? I'm not privy to that, it's not relevant to our application, but.
Danielle.
Absolutely, yeah.
Danielle Home Improvement?
I'm sorry?
Danielle Home Improvement, from Oxford.
Okay, cool. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Okay. Let's see, resolution for 774 Main Street South, Moby LLC, site plan modification, PDU number 16, MBL 24-87, October 21st, 2025. Whereas the Southbury Planning Commission on 10/21/2025 received an application for modification to an approved site plan dated stamped received by the land use department on 10/20/2025. Whereas the applicant is proposing to modify the site to alter the appearance of the location doors and windows as approved on 5/17/2022. Whereas the applicant has represented the following changes. One, changing the rear doors from double French doors to now just standard doors with no change to the location of the architecture. Two, addition of one window beneath the peak of the roof line for aesthetic purposes. This window is located in the attic, which is not functional for occupancy and is only utilized for utilities. Number three, removal of one window located on the second floor. This window was revealed to be located within a closet on the residential second floor of the building. As a result, the applicant has proposed to relocate this window to the primary commercial first floor. Whereas no other changes are proposed to the building footprint, parking, uses, floor plan layout, or landscaping. Whereas the commission finds the proposed modification to be consistent and as in the keeping with the pertinent regulation of the town of Southbury Planning and Conservative Development. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Southbury Planning Commission, the application is approved to allow the following modifications. Changing rear doors from French double doors to single doors. Two, addition of the window in the attic section of the building below the peak of the roof line. And relocation of the second floor window along the street side of the first floor along the street side. Subject to the following. Submission of necessary applications to the building department and fire marshal as to be required. And B, there's any subsequent changes to the building design, aesthetics, landscaping, uses, interior layouts, parking, et cetera, shall require review and approval from the Southbury Planning Commission. All in favor of approval? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All set.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
All right, let's see, under other business.
Jordan, I'm so sorry, I stepped away. Who motioned?
And then.
One second, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're good, thank you. Under other business.
Thank you.
A-3A zoning commission referral petition to amend section 12 of the zoning regulations. Southbury Zoning Commission petitioners proposing to amend section 12 of the Southbury Zoning Regulation to handle planned development units, PDUs, on Main Street South in the same manner as planned development districts, PDDs. Everybody kind of up to speed on where we're at with this from earlier in the summer, later summer, as to kind of the current changes that Jordan kind of released to everyone? Does everyone have any questions or thoughts or should we have Jordan kind of bring us a quick overview of again of those changes? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to tell me that?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool.
So, as we all remember, the original modification to section 12 Plan Developments was to modify the language to remove the housing density requirements from that standard and instead allow the commission to set their own density because previously it was a far more restrictive unit per acre requirement than even the POCD recommends. So, this is a longstanding holdover from the Heritage Village Development and as a result, we were stuck with this limiting regulation on the planned development units. So, as we made that modification, it became very evident that as we start to develop the more non-conforming parcels on Main Street and especially speaking along Main Street, the nonconformity aspects become very challenging. If you consider any parcel like the subway building, Parcells Parcells, even Mrs. Loomis' property, who was just here representing herself, these are parcels that are non-conforming, which means with respect to the zoning regulations, there is no flexibility to really modify them to be anything other than what they currently exist today. The intent with this amendment is along Main Street South specifically as the economic corridor for Southbury, planned development units, if the zoning commission saw fit, could achieve the same provisions as a planned development district. What that would allow is for flexibility of design and actual lot standards for those parcels. The reason this is necessary to be put in the commission's hands rather than the avenue that's currently available is the zoning board of appeals is an ineffective tool to manage these types of parcels. They operate as a relief valve to the strict interpretation of the zoning regulations for one-off instances. We have a number of non-conforming parcels along Main Street and there is no ability through the zoning board of appeals variance applications for an applicant to say, "I'm doing the right thing for the community, I'm providing the best opportunity for this parcel and I would like a variance to the zoning regulations to go up to two stories, to add gables, to change the height of my building in a minor way," because again, the nonconformities lock you into exactly what's there. So, if you have a one-story box-like structure, if someone wanted to redevelop that, they are limited to a one-story box-like structure. We can't add gables, we can't add peaks, we can't add architectural features, we're just whole cloth limited from all that. And to use the EBA to achieve variances to actually get the right development on Main Street is improper use of the zoning board of appeals. They have to adjudicate on applications based on the hardship with the land. And case law upholds that if you have any structure whatsoever, if you have a physical structure that you can use, that's reasonable use of land. That you saying, "I want a more architecturally appealing structure" is not a hardship. So, therefore, the zoning board of appeals would have no recourse but to deny your application and we're right back to square one with respect to the limitations of development along Main Street. That is pretty much the basis for this modification and amendment and the intent behind it. But I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to get anything, any additional information. If the commission wants more time to look at this and think it over, special meetings or something, we could absolutely schedule and discuss this further before the public hearing kicks off. But this is the planning commission's opportunity to respond to the zoning commission's idea and option to effectively change and get good development on Main Street. But if it's something that this commission wants additional time or really doesn't feel as a good idea, that's really why we're here today.
So, the whole purpose, the whole purpose of this change is because zoning deals with the land whereas we deal with the building?
Regardless, as you recall in the last modification, planning commission no longer is involved with planned development units. It was determined that that was an improper commission to handle planned development units because you effectively changed the zoning regulations regarding special exceptions on that site. So, it was determined that the planning commission has no authority to change regulations. So, we needed to put the control of PDUs within the right commission and then we modified the density a little bit. What's happening here today and what's being proposed to the zoning commission today is an amendment that right now there's an acreage limitation on parcels. Five acres or more, you're allowed to be a PDD. Planned development districts, you write your own regulations, you set your own standards. And if the town believes that this is the best intent, motif, stop and shop, shop right, all these plazas, all these buildings, all these businesses wrote their own regulations because there was a good use of that land. What this would allow is along Main Street South, if there was a parcel less than five acres and the zoning commission saw the merit in allowing that parcel to achieve flexible zoning standards, then they could see the merit in the design and the opportunity there and provide that flexibility to that parcel through this provision.
This makes sense for long-term with the buildings Jordan was talking about. There's a decent amount of buildings or land on the main road that nothing can really be done with without this. Bob?
Just a clarification. It is affecting only Main Street South. And in the future, should developments change or density of our commercial avenues change, let's just say for instance Route 67 South. for instance, Route sixty-seven Southford Road, you were starting to find some non-conforming lots there. What would be the process to add that road? Would have to go back before planning to add that road?
Well, planning was actually the one that provided the amendment to the original section twelve. So, if this commission felt so inclined and saw an opportunity there, this commission could propose an amendment.
That's my question. It would have to go back before planning to add another area of town if we saw fit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or if the zoning commission saw fit, they would do exactly what they're doing, and it comes before you either way as a referral. You either kinda start the process through thinking ahead?
Or it's referred to us.
Or it's referred to you, and you get to really consider it at that moment.
Thank you.
As a matter of catching up, this is.
One time? As a matter of catching up, this is the property located, it's the old Joe Betty property?
This actually is an amendment to the zoning regulations. Before the zoning commission is an application for a planned development unit that if this went through, they could potentially utilize this provision. However, this is a, this is a change for all the parcels. So, we can't look at this potential option and only consider a development. This is a text change, so we're changing the rules for all the parcels along Main Street. So, regardless of any current applications before the commission, both the planning commission and the zoning commission have to look at this amendment purely as an amendment to the entire Main Street corridor, not at the behest of one potential application.
We got, so whatever they're doing has to come under the umbrella of you re-changing for the whole Main Street South?
Right.
Right, to accommodate that?
In order for that application to move forward in its current proposal, they would have to utilize a provision such as this. However, if this didn't move forward, that application's dead in the water, and that applicant has to figure out how they move forward with that site. But this is completely kind of contained all in itself, and we have to do our best to block that out when we're considering this text change.
So, you don't, we don't know what, what would happen, what would be developed on that property? We're not concerned about that?
Currently, we have an idea because there is an application pending. It's FOI. If you, if you looked up any of the records, it's all out there for public information.
Right. So, you mentioned the word hardship, okay? What is considered hardship? Is it considered hardship, the clogging of the Main Street South? Do we need another traffic light? The volume is very heavy, even at seven o'clock tonight, to go onto Main Street. So, if you're going to allow under this umbrella for the whole street, you have the opportunity to do that, create that with more volume of people. Now, it's a nice idea, but does it go all the way beyond by Miranda's? Let's say, what is that, Main Street South, all the way down to the Russian Village? Does that, is this umbrella including all of that property?
No, it is not, because if you look at the text, it references the zones and it references frontage. And when you look at the zones and the frontage, once you get to Miranda's, you blend into the manufacturing zone. So, it's actually not consistent with the zones that are included in the text. Now, to go back to the initial question about traffic, hardship is not considered traffic. When we take a look at hardship, and this is really hardships and ZBA are one in the same. They really work together. A hardship is someone who is being affected by a zoning regulation, and the effect of that zoning regulation precludes them reasonable use of their property. That is a, that is a hardship. So, a good example, if you have a lot that's so small that if you were to put your septic system and your well at two corners of the property, they physically couldn't meet the standards of separation. By a strict interpretation of the health code rules of separation between well and septic, you can't use that property. Your unreasonably, your precluded use of that property. It's unreasonable to tell you that you have to abide by this regulation because you don't get to live on a property. They've taken it effectively. That's kinda the intent between hardships and the ZBA, and that's what they are in place to, again, provide a relief valve for residents in those instances. To achieve a hardship is very, very difficult and very infrequent, that a property actually is able to legally go through the steps and display very clearly that they do in fact have a hardship related to the land.
Okay, thank you.
Related to traffic, though, every application that comes before a commission, even if this provision was able to move forward, is what's called legislative, meaning it's a text change that they would be looking to do because they're writing their own regulations for the parcel. That means at any point, if the commission found that the traffic impact was too much, the levels of intensity on infrastructure was too high, even the aesthetics were improper for Main Street, they could deny the application whole cloth at any moment, and there's no really appeal process for something like that.
That hasn't happened yet?
Which part?
What you just described?
A denial?
Yeah.
Of PDD's? We have denied PDD's in the past, yes. The zoning has.
Now, this only applies to Main Street South from the light to basically the church.
More or less, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, now, what happens if somebody comes in and they wanna do the same process on Main Street North? Do they have to appeal? Do they have to go through this whole process over again?
If someone wanted to.
I'm sorry. Okay, if somebody wanted to do something on Main Street North as opposed to South, they would have to start this whole process all over again. They would have to go to zoning, get to, just like this, okay.
This is, this is a text change, and that's pretty standard. If anyone wants to change the rules for the zoning regulations.
They have to go start at zoning, do the whole thing.
You got it.
Is it gonna do it?
I didn't do it.
It refers constantly to the plan of conservation and development. We have a no sewer policy in the, in the, in the plan of conservation and development. Would this zone change require the extension of the sewer and water line on Main Street?
No, nothing changes for our current standards. If all of Main Street was allowed to be PDD's because they were five acres or more, it still wouldn't change the fact that we are sewer avoidant. We have ordinances supporting that, and our watershed cannot handle the capacity of sewer. That all stays consistent.
So, any application would have to maintain that sewer avoidance?
Yep. Septic systems are the standard, and that's the expectation on Main Street.
Right.
The fact that this has been made public, but it's not part of what we're looking at tonight, seems like counterproductive because the pictures, the architecture, the everything is part of.
It's public information. Right now, it's a little odd because they're, they're happening at the same time.
Yes.
So, that's the difficulty. But, like I said, the amendment needs to be considered on its own and cannot be considered in the face of or in light of a pending application.
Is that something that could be because it's public knowledge now? So, there is a, you know, to be unbiased and just go by the regulations when this is public knowledge, could that be brought up at the end of the public hearing?
If, if a commissioner themselves felt incapable of rendering a decision in an unbiased manner, then the process would be for them to recuse themselves based on the information that's been made public.
Yeah, that's a conflict, could be a conflict, yeah. Because that's when they, when you talked about traffic.
Yeah.
Traffic in schools and.
Poplar Elementary and Monarch, I mean, Monarch.
Yeah, we can't, we can't address the traffic. It's not our purview, traffic in the schools and the infrastructure and the, and the safety and public works, which zoning was gonna have to do that when there's an application. We can't do it.
But an application will get referred to this commission as well. Any subsequent application that utilizes this provision comes right back to this commission to make considerations on aesthetics, traffic, impact, quality of life, streetscape, anything that this commission deems relevant to impart knowledge onto the zoning commission, who would be rendering the decision on the application. This would be the same process that we're going through today that you would go through for subsequent applications.
So.
Do we need more time after we're in after for on this?
Well, just one off-the-wall comment. Not a bad idea. Long location.
Off-the-wall comment.
If it's about that, Mary, then we can't really.
Can't.
Yeah, we're talking about an amendment, and we really gotta just focus on the amendment.
So, we're basically looking at the whole, the whole street, right? Future and current?
So, we're doing.
Totally, that's even out there?
So to speak.
Right.
So, this, this text change would be proactive so that we can avoid a potential application or an imminent application from having to go through zoning board of appeals where we lose control of it?
Correct.
So, doing this change gives more flexibility to the options on Main Street, but we, the planning commission, will remain the gatekeeper for what, what.
So, basically, this led to, this led to future, well, Jordan's team looked at the whole street in general. Are there other properties that have the same issues, right? And how do we get around them? And this came to be the solution. And it wasn't just from them. It was kind of a consensus, right? From like, from our meeting theme, from the summertime talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
It's been, you know, conversation for a while.
We're butting up against these things actively. So, Parcells is for sale right now, and it's going through purchase. Candido's property is something that they've expressed wanting to modify and change, and in conversations with my office, expressing the limitations of any non-conformity, non-conforming property that wants to go through a change. I think when I did the initial analysis, it's about twenty-five non-conforming properties along Main Street South alone, right? Though each one of those is gonna butt up against one issue or another, whether it's a, the lot is too small, the buildings are too close.
Environmental impact, if you're talking about Parcells.
Wouldn't be non-conformity, but obviously would be definitely something we wanna consider at the time of redevelopment. But with respect to the twenty-five non-conformities, those are the things that the zoning regulations are gonna butt up against. And the flexibility and opportunity for the zoning commission and planning commission and powers that be to really develop the right future for Main Street, you're shackled by the regulations. And again, the zoning board of appeals is an ineffective tool to achieve that change that you would wanna see on your primary economic corridor.
Comes up in November sixteen, did you say?
No, it's twelfth, twelfth or fourteenth.
So, it really gives the opportunity for the town to make the land, all those land that are non-conformant turn out to be something really nice if somebody decides to do something versus staying the way they are and looking okay. You know what I mean? So, it addresses a need from that to really jazz it up.
What is the date of the public hearing?
Fourteenth, fourteenth.
Twelfth or fourteenth?
I don't know.
Twelfth is a Wednesday.
That's the twelfth, no? Yep.
That's, that's the day. Okay.
I have one question on here. It says that the application detailed plans submitted to the zoning enforcement officer?
That wasn't part of the text change. That's the current language of section twelve.
Maybe it should be. Maybe it should be changed because that, that's.
If you wanna make a comment on that, is there any reason why plans shouldn't be delivered to the zoning enforcement officer, given that our office is in charge of receiving those and then providing it to the commission?
It's not the office. It says specifically zoning enforcement officer. So, sometimes we've had one, sometimes we haven't. If it's ed staff or something else.
A lot of the regulations unfortunately carry that cadence. We are going through the zoning regulation rewrite. I would say the minute details.
This is new. I, I just.
Section twelve is not new.
No, no. I mean, this submission.
But only the items in red are what's changing, and I believe they're all the way at the back.
I didn't do color.
Oh, here, let me get you a copy, Nancy.
The zoning enforcement officers should not have that responsibility. I, I think it should be zoning commission or something.
To make it the office of the.
Zoning or the zoning, yeah, or the zoning.
We could do that.
Commission.
No problem.
They don't even work full-time, do they?
So, what section are you looking at, Nancy?
Page four of six, twelve point five point two B.
Twelve point five point two B. The detailed plan shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer together with an application for a zoning permit.
Yeah.
That's consistent with what the zoning officer would need to review because the zoning officer is in charge of reviewing applications and issuing permits. So, I think that language is consistent. They do do that. My office and the zoning enforcement officer handles that.
Your office does.
Mm-hmm.
The zoning enforcement officer.
Is within my office.
I would like it to say that, then. It's your office, it's the office, office. It's not.
Okay, put it in your notes.
Sure, absolutely. No, not a problem at all.
That's just one person, the zoning enforcement.
We can do that.
All right.
You can go with that?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Not a problem at all.
Do you think we can make a referral back tonight to zoning, or do you guys want more time?
I'm okay. How about that side of the table? You guys good? Any questions? Last minute for Jordan on it before we, anything you might see in it besides what Nancy mentioned?
I'd like to compliment the applicant and staff for the, for the detailed and responsible job they've done.
That's you?
Except for twelve point three point five.
Well, I don't wanna bring up anything else. What the heck?
You guys are good over there, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we need to make a positive referral. Who wants to make the motion? I'll make the motion. Positive referral back to the zoning for text amendment change for section twelve of zoning regulations. Ryan Conley seconds. Any questions or discussion? All in favor for the positive referral back? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Positive referral is set to go back to zoning. Thank you. All right, under other business, eight dash twenty-four Board of Selectment referral request for the Memorial Stone of Veterans Park.
Lynn's here to represent the application. Oh, okay.
Just jump right up there and.
If you wouldn't mind just giving him a quick overview, Lynn, that'd be really helpful.
That'd be great.
Appreciate you.
So, it's all on record. That'd be great. Just press the button. They want you, and you're good to go.
Okay, yeah, this is for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and we are a small group right now, working with the veterans and the historical society, and we are the America's two hundred and fiftieth Southbury, Connecticut. We approached the veterans to make sure that they were on board with this, and they were very pleased with the idea of putting a monument. There is a picture of the monument that they agreed to, and the only, they, we changed it from the way we originally thought, putting it in front of the flagpole, which the veterans wanted to do, but then we let them know that if they do that, it would cut into where their memorial day or flag day or what services they do or ceremonies. So, they realized that and put it in between, is it World War One and? All, all wars. So, they were in agreement with the placement.
You guys good down there with this? Okay.
All right. Any questions now?
Any questions? Anybody? No, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thanks.
Motion for a positive referral to Selectman.
Okay, we have a positive referral back for the request to the Board of Selectment for the Memorial Stone of Veterans Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I can't vote.
Abstention, fantastic.
Abstention.
Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see here. Where are we? Number three, administrative approval request fourteen fifty South Bird Road, conversion of approved use for Happy Days Adult Daycare to Happy Days Creative Art Center.
Anyone happen to remember Jackie Ennis from a couple of months ago? So, it was unfortunate because when Jackie got approval for the adult daycare that we all worked through and wanted to make sure was done right, because it's a, it's a specific section in the zoning regulations for adult daycare use. You need licensing from the state. There's a lot of requirements. So, it's not a standard service-based use. If you do arts and crafts, if you cut hair, if you shine. If you do arts and crafts, if you cut hair, if you shine shoes, that's all under service-based. It's a pretty big umbrella, but unfortunately the applicant had come in representing adult daycare, which is again, very hyper-specific to that use. Once approvals were done and the zoning enforcement officer was tasked with kind of working out some of the more specific items of the parcel, it became evident that the applicant wanted to kind of do more than just adult daycare. So it became clear that, okay, we're gonna have to bring you back before the planning commission because we have a statement of use that's approved and we need to modify that to add an accessory use that allows you to do arts and crafts with kids and not adult daycare. So now you're trying to do two things. Finally, we get her into a meeting with the building official, the fire marshal, zoning enforcement officer, myself, the applicant, and it became, comes clear that, one, she's not licensed by the state, two, she doesn't intend to do adult daycare, and, three, that essential option and, and use is, is ineffective for that parcel and not really the intent. She still intends to provide option, or, um, arts and care, arts and crafts activities to seniors, some with dementia, as is cited in the application, but for the most part, she is just looking to do an arts and crafts center. So the request is to allow us to move forward with administrative approval of the standard service-based use of an arts and crafts center as is consistent with Kuman's first approval that this commission went through under a special exception.
Don't we need a new application?
Didn't she say she was licensed then, though?
She did.
But she's not.
She's not moving forward with that, the licensing and the adult daycare, no.
I think we need a new application. It's a different use.
That's a whole different population.
Yep.
What is?
I mean, she's now serving a whole different population.
It's, it's arts and crafts.
Yeah, but children's a little different, I mean, that's.
But it's not a education and she doesn't provide any care to them. So there's no after-school programming, there's no drop-off, she's not in charge of the kids, it's just providing a service, and frankly, parents will bring their kids in if they see fit.
Do they have kids there?
No.
Oh.
It, it sounds like it's gonna roll over into things that we're not.
It's been, it's been, yeah.
It was before.
Before, it was, I think, you know, maybe a dozen people who would be dropped off. Nancy, can you shut that off? Who would be dropped off. Now, if there are people who.
From the perspective of how we rate traffic and parking, it is no more of an intensive use than what was previously applied for, from a parking perspective. I don't disparage anything this commission has said, cause if you do want additional clarity and you want the applicant to come in, that's what this is for. But the request for an, an additional application is something that we can absolutely go through. But the intent behind looking for an administrative approval is consistent with what we're looking to do with kind of expediting the process of simple conversions, but if there's too many questions here, then an application clearly becomes necessary.
I, I agree. I think this is a totally different universe. I think that, that she has to come back in with the modifications. She has to come, she has to come in here and explain to us what the new parameters are.
Business model.
And what the new business mo-, thank you, what the new business model is. Cause it's, it's, it's very different.
It's everything, yeah.
Yes.
It wasn't just arts and crafts with the.
Yeah. When, when she came here, it was just seniors, it was just adults. This is a different business model. We didn't approve this new business model. We did approve the old business.
So the, the reason I'm bringing this before you isn't to subvert this. We had a conversation with my predecessor Judy about expediting the land use application process.
Sure.
And not miring things up. So the procedure for that was if this planning commission had, had rendered a decision on a previous use that is consistent with a proposed use, then a proposal comes into this commission and if it is approved, administrative approval moves forward. It keeps everything from having to go back and forth from planning and zoning, special exceptions, public hearings, just for someone who wants to operate an office space in an office space. Again, if there's too many questions here, by all means, we bring the applicant in. But the representation that I'm bringing to you today is Kuman Learning Center is consistent with the representation of an arts center. But if you've, if this commission feels that there's too many unknowns, an application comes in.
I, I personally think there's too many, too many unknowns. I personally think that this is a super business model.
I agree, and I don't think it's possible that it's not expedited.
Yeah, I think if it was, you know, something that was similar with.
I apologize about the mic. Let me just try from here with this one. Just halfway in.
You know, if it was like a simple text change, for example, and what didn't impact the, um, the safety and, um, how many people were gonna be there and the type, you know, the, the change in demographics, then I, I would say that it would be fine, but this just seems like it's out of the scope of what we would normally just reflexively change.
I agree, I'm pushing second. In this case, um, I think if we don't do our due diligence, especially when there's children and something happens down the road, they're gonna, everyone's gonna look back to planning commission as to.
We may be ballards or something.
All right, we don't wanna land on you, let it land on us.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, let's bring her in, just see what goes on.
Ask and answer, consider it that way. That's perfect.
Additional things?
All right, cool.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Let's see here now. Remember?
Before we move forward, so how are we?
Oh, sorry, um, so we are going to, so a decision on that, we're going to bring the applicant, uh, to the next meeting, just give us a, you know, high level overview of kind of what she wants to do, since the application changed. And she has to re-sign the paperwork?
I.
Mm-hmm. Yeah?
She has a new application.
It's the whole process.
Yeah.
New application.
So then.
Mm-hmm.
Richard, so that means that this particular administrative approval request has been denied?
Correct.
In this, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Sonja.
Yes, sorry about that, Sonja.
No, no, that's okay, no problem.
So yes, administrative approval has been denied. We're gonna get her on the schedule for the next meeting to bring us a new application to the, to the planning commission.
Yeah, just bring this card.
Yep, thank you. All right, let's see, under members' reports, affordable housing subcommittee, um, who's here for it? Robert.
Okay, well, we met on the sixteenth.
Okay.
Uh, we started off talking about the educational forum planning. Uh, this has been an ongoing topic of trying to bring all concerned players and potential players of affordable housing in for, uh, an educational forum for not only those people, but for the public as well. What's been a little bit of, of impediment for us is we're, we're trying to get everybody on the same page, you know? Where does, uh, let's say zoning stand on this? Where does the board of selectmen stand on this? You know, where does Jordan's office stand on this, um, planning? And I understand that Alex had a meeting with you and there's a potential for getting all the involved players, selectmen, planning, zoning, in one room so that they can hash this out and at least we'll have a direction to go in and not be bouncing with different, uh, commissions and get everybody on the same page. So that's what we're looking forward to, that's in the initial stages. Uh, besides that, um, one of the members brought up, um, there was an article regarding region fifteen's possible expansion of schools. Um, there was a mention in, in the article that they were considering Pierce Hollow property. Um, so there was concern is, could that be utilized for a school? Could it be taken away from the potential project that's been in the works for the affordable housing? You know, it's our understanding that it was passed through the legislative process up in the state of Connecticut and it would preclude the school from utilizing that site unless they in turn somehow went back to the state and had wording changes on their own. Um, but there was a bit of discussion on that and what a school could potentially, um, how it could change a neighborhood, um, and affect affordable housing in that same neighborhood. Um, in addition to that, um, hang on, let's see, um, there was a general discussion of three thirty-three Main Street South in the application process, um, before zoning, uh, and the number of units and the number of potential affordable housing units there. And last, on the discussion was, uh.
Is that a discussion? I'm sorry, I mean, after the change of the application, or is this prior to that?
This is, uh, this is prior to that, so his is pri-.
Prior to it, and it was affordable housing and just a general discussion.
Totally fine. This is proper, absolutely no problem with this.
Perfect. And the last thing that we talked about was sewer avoidance and its impact on affordable housing. Um, we kinda wanted to get a feel through the members of, you know, where they felt we brought it up, that the P O C D was very strong in the language of that and that's what our regulations were. Um, the general consensus was that Pierce Hollow presents a great opportunity for a larger scale affordable housing complex that would, uh, fit into that area and it has the ability to tie into an existing sewer. Um, but further projects, um, with the lack of sewers, we're gonna be more focused on the smaller developments that have already been going through and not trying to think of pie in the sky, big developments, because it just doesn't work. Um, we realize that and that will be our focus.
Sure.
So, that was pretty much it.
We want to meet and have this joint meeting. We have using, we've developed an affordable housing plan. Will that be the blueprint that you work off of?
Um, yes, that will be part of the, the process, but, um, in addition, our plan kinda goes nowhere if we don't have the support of some of the other commissions.
That's what I mean, so.
It makes total sense, cause then when someone talks about it, everyone's on the same page, we just, you know.
That's what we don't have right now.
Yeah, that's it.
Is everyone on the same page. And the whole purpose of this was to get everybody on the same page.
Well, I would almost counter that. I, I think we make a lot of assumptions about where people and different commissions are. We don't know where everybody is.
Right.
So that's the purpose of bringing everybody into the same room and let's get it once and for all, find out what everybody's feelings are and where, where we can go and.
You said a plan that way.
I thought that was the purpose of our, creating an affordable housing plan, that we had input from all of those. Has that changed? Probably, yeah?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, we'll find out.
We'll find out.
Right, and if it mimics what's there, then that's, God bless it, perfect. If not, we have to, you know, make some modifications, that's fine, that works.
Hmm.
Okay, cool. Excellent. That's, good? All right. Nicely done, Robert, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, Robin, how about your streetscape committee? How we doing?
Streetscape.
Uh, we met last night.
Ah.
Yes.
Time is great.
And so E D C and streetscape are partnering. So we're combining resources with E D C to partner with them and go on a site walk on Sunday, the twenty-sixth, at two P M. So Jordan put together a roadmap last night and gave it to the, to, to streetscape to illustrate the areas that we were gonna walk and take a look at and assess. The idea is to look at where we could do some uplifting, some beautification, some, um, destination and place making, uh, with things that are low cost and high impact. So that might be, um, some plantings that we might be able to do, so we would partner with the, um, local garden clubs and the Heritage Vill- Village Garden Club. Uh, there may be opportunities for us to do murals or some type of painting or something like that, so we would partner with our Arts and Culture Alliance. So, um, right now, the foundation is to take a walk and see what our landscape looks like and, and where can we make an impact. Uh, anything else to add to that, Jordan?
No, I think you hit on it pretty well. Um, the real intent behind streetscape right now is they really formulate the, the goals that they're gonna be able to action before it's disbanded, is to bring in a lot of groups. It, it's not intended to be a very long commission, it's not in perpetuity. Yeah, it was only really, I think two years was the limit that they put on it, but, you know, if it goes longer, it goes longer. Um, but the intent is to really involve a lot of the players that can impart a lot of change onto the streetscape. It's a great asset for our community and it's underutilized in a lot of ways. Um, we don't have a lot of clear parks that sit along Main Street. When it comes time to activate a space, the spaces are relatively small. If you've ever been to the farmer's market, it's a small pocket. The, the Shoprite Plaza does a great job, but even then, it's kind of confined. When we consider the place that we have in Southbury is, it's the entirety of the Main Street. So what we can do to activate the entire space is where a lot of the commissioners are thinking, on top of how do we maintain this? How do we get this to be stewarded the right way? And then how can we then expand it in measured but proper avenues as to, you know, future extensions, whether it be Maggie's or property or heading to Heritage? Um, and how those standards get codified into our zoning regulations and then how do we then impart those standards onto any future development that has an effect on our streetscape?
Beautiful. Okay. Yep.
Amendments going around?
Everybody's comfortable with this?
Did, did we get that in email?
This one here?
Well, I don't know, the cog report?
That wasn't an email.
That's a calendar, right?
Hey, this was in the e- email.
It was an email, yesterday.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, okay. And do they give us their minutes also, which I'd love to see? Cause we have, the planning arm is disbanded.
Yeah, this isn't a meeting, Nancy, this is just updates on what, what's being amended in the nearby area.
I see that one.
Firstly.
You got it.
Aren't happening currently. Cause again, it was disbanded.
Oh, the planning was disbanded.
Mm-hmm.
Cog stills.
Cog still exists, yes.
Yeah, and they don't have executive meetings?
I, they, I believe they do, but I, I'm not familiar with the, the meeting cadence that Jeff has been going to.
Yeah.
We have a regional plan of conservation and development and I've been attending those meetings, but that's separate.
Oh, good. So what do we, what input do we get?
Right now, it's just getting started. Um, the regional plan of conservation and development is something that we want to be involved with as much as we can so that we can make sure that their plan carries over the, the, the goals for Southbury and that our goals and our desires are reflected on that plan when it comes time for grant opportunities. It's very clearly in the regional plan and our opportunities can then have an, an easy time getting support from the grant opportunities.
Excellent, because the cities get the grants, the cities get the attention, the city, yeah, and then.
No, I, we, we have to be in the room to represent ourselves, so I've been attending those and will continue to attend those until they're finished.
There are also a lot of it online.
Before the commission, a, a topic. Cause I, I submitted, I submitted one as well. I know, Nancy, you had one.
I denied two of mine because I'm.
You're up.
Have to be on the ballot, so.
Yep, same with Robin. Okay.
I'm still waiting to see, let her get in.
Oh, you may not either, cause you're on the ballot.
You're on the ballot too.
You're on the ballot too.
So that would be why.
They, they won't publish yours then, and the second reason they said was because they have fewer advertisers, they don't have much room. I don't know where that came from.
I emailed and he emailed me right back, it was just like that was done.
Yeah, yours was.
Thanks to Jordan.
Mine was done in a day, they said, thank you very much, you know, or whatever.
Yours comes out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was good.
And I know some other people in town that are doing it as well.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right, that works, all right, sounds good. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.